My name is Robert Billings. I live in Middletown. I live about 2,500 feet from the proposed power lines. I'm not paid to be here tonight. I became a first-time father two years ago when I was 62 years old. I don't live as close to the power lines as many people here. And I feel very bad for the people who live within 1,000 feet of the power lines, and 500 feet, and 100 feet, or even less. However, my toddler son would go to River Plaza Elementary School. And that school is close to where the power lines would be. I love my son, and I am considering having him go to a private school. I don't want him that close to the power lines. The woman who just spoke quoted from Jerome McHale. And I got on my computer today because I wanted to go back to the JCPN-L email that I received from them on August 18th, 2016. They said, as... This is a little bit of a different quote, but they spoke about how the power lines would not impact real estate values. I believe that's patently false. I have a... I have a friend whose wife died of breast cancer. And she was a good friend of mine too, a beautiful person. They had two beagles, two small dogs. They both died of cancer. There was another woman in the neighborhood, close to their home, who died of breast cancer. There were high-voltage power lines passing within about 50 feet of their house. Now, that's just anecdotal evidence about the danger of power lines. I'm certainly not saying that's some kind of proof. But in regard to real estate values, when my friend told me about the power lines, and his firm belief that it was a factor in the cancer of his wife, the neighbor, and the two dogs, I immediately decided in my own mind that I would never buy a house that was close to power lines. So, the point I'm making now is not so much about the danger to health, although I firmly believe it is a danger to health, these lines, but that there are so many people who have a concern about the health factor in regard to these power lines, that it definitely has an impact on property values. And again, I feel really bad for the people who live closer to the railroad tracks and the proposed site of the lines than myself. In this email that JCPN-L sent out, they show a handsome family: husband, wife, and two children, in front of a beautiful home. And they all have big smiles on their face. Now, I know we can't have any cross-examination here, but I would be interested in knowing where JCPN-L got the photo of this happy family. And I'm wondering what the address of the house is, if they know, and if this very happy, handsome family lives close to high-voltage power lines. There's a lot of marketing that's going on here, and it's... It's really unfortunate when big business shows a lack of concern for the community. And I'm an economic conservative. I'm very conservative, but I also believe that something that makes America great is good ethical values and a concern for the community. I just close by quoting Alexis de Tocqueville. De Tocqueville was a young French aristocrat who came to this country in the 1830s. He wondered what made this new world so dynamic? This young country that was only about 60 years old? What made it to be such a wonderful place? And he wrote a book, Democracy in America. And he said, "America is great because America is good. And when America ceases to be good, America will cease to be great. I hope that those who are in authority will make the good decision on behalf of the residents of Monmouth County." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Winanowa, from Middletown, New Jersey. Thank you, everyone, for coming today, and thank you, JCPN-L, for granting me a second public hearing. Before I begin, I need to do some housekeeping. Today, we'll hear people talk about the right-of-way road. This represents the narrow passage of land that JCPN-L wants to build these six-to-10-foot wide monopoles. JCPN-L continuously states there's already an existing road in which they want to build their monstrosity poles. As a matter of fact, this is one of their favorite phrases. It is, however, incorrect. It is New Jersey Transit Rail Right-of-Way. When we speak of the right-of-way, please put "rail" in front of it. Not only is that the proper name, it is also, as you would think, describes the intended use of the right-of-way: a train. If you use the full proper name, New Jersey Transit Rail Right-of-Way, it describes another big obstacle that I'm not sure everyone understands: that New Jersey Transit owns this land and cannot be forced by the OAL or the BPU to lease this land to JCPN-L. This is not just an ordinary permit they need. That without this land, JCPN-L cannot build this project, regardless of how the OAL or BPU rule. By omitting that small but crucial word, "rail," you start to forget that it's not a typical 300-to-500-foot-wide utility right-of-way, but a narrow 100-foot rail right-of-way. So, when people come up here... So, when people come up here and only say "right-of-way," please, in your head, insert the word "rail." There's gonna be a little test later. People may come up here and support the project. They did in the first public hearing. You hear, as we did in the first public hearing, that transmission lines are needed, and they invoke the memories of Sandy. Let me be clear: a third, or even a fourth, transmission line would not have prevented the outages of Sandy. JCPN-L has acknowledged that. The outages were mainly due to damage to distribution lines and substations, which, by the way, he urged them to upgrade. I would invite JCPN-L right now to correct me if I'm wrong. I don't even think JCPN-L's here anymore, and that's part of the problem. They do not want to hear what we said. They are not interested. They do not want to solve this problem a different way. There's been a lot of buzz in our community about JCPN-L trying to solicit support for this project. At first, it was commercials on TV. There were Facebook ads, radio ads, paper ads. I want to note, not only the ads explain why they need this project, but only advertise a happy family, or perhaps a softball player, saying the project is for reliability. Now, they have started a new campaign for people to sign petitions in favor of this project. This is the flyer they've been mailing around to communities nowhere near here, up to 20 miles away that we know of. It starts by saying, "Reduce the length and frequency of service disruptions," in big letters. Clearly, that is alive. Remember, it is the distribution and substations that have caused the disruption. They say it's a 10-mile transmission line planned along an existing right-of-way, their favorite phrase. Who put the word "rail" in front of it that time? There is that phrase, "By completing this form..." At the very bottom, they say, "By completing this form, I can send to JCPN-L, providing my name, and contact information to the Office of Administrative Law and Board of Public Utilities indicating my support." As you can see, it contains no reference, or even their own MCRP website for additional facts, most of which are misleading and we disagree with. It does not say, "For more information, call this number." It does not say what towns this project will be going through. It does not say your rates will be going up because of it. It certainly does not say that there's a major opposition to it, and most experts do not believe it is needed. It says nothing that would tell you anything important or specific to this project. It basically says, "Do you like reliable energy?" Oh, you do? Then please check this box with postage, the postage is paid for you. The other means they used to give signatures was by hiring college-age store knockers. These hired JCPN-L employees went door-to-door in towns as far as 20 miles away, and asked people to sign a petition, giving them no more than what was on that flyer. I formally ask that any and all petitions that they have garnered through this misleading There's a lot more coming, hold those calls. A copy of the flyers being submitted with my letter. I'm happy for the big turnout tonight, and I'm sorry for all those that missed the first public hearing. Had you been there, you would have heard speaker after speaker explain the flaws in this project proposal were the same as they were in 1989, and again in 2000. Each time the town shows up and stops this madness, it was very clearly pointed out that not only did we have a transmission line, we already have a second or backup line in place. These lines have been 99.998% reliable over the past decade with only hours, yes, hours of outages recorded. JCPN-L will tell you that past results are not indicative of future outages. However, demand is going down, and the population is flat or shrinking. That is right from consensus data. It was explained how this project is unprecedented, no line in the history of the U.S., and possibly the world, has ever been constructed with our facts. There is no transmission line that has ever been built so close to an active commuter train line in such a densely populated area. I do not have the... Just a minute, I'm gonna give you guys something to think about. I'll tell you one. I do not have to be an engineer or scientist to know, there's a good reason for that. I mentioned earlier, when speaking of the right-of-way, to make sure you include the word "rail." This is a critical and perhaps fatal part of the MCRP. New Jersey's transit mission is to provide a safe, reliable, and cost-effective transit service. It is not in the business of providing land leases to utilities that want to build poles within feet of their train that will most likely cause the disruption of train service and put their passengers at risk. A direct conflict to their mission statement. I want to make clear why JCPN-L is doing this. Very simply, it is money. They will have this project funded through ratepayer increases, some of which have already been applied, and then they will be guaranteed a rate of return on their investment. Need proof? Their president and CEO, as stated on investment calls, that transmission lines are a major initiative and driver of future revenue. As a matter of fact, if anyone wants to read their 2015 annual statement, they have a name for it. It's called the Energizing the Future Initiative. It's a $15 billion initiative. On the first three pages of the annual statement, he states multiple times how the transmission line will be a major platform for the company. I ask you, rate council and BPU, how, if a company has a financial incentive and admits it has a major initiative to build transmission lines, whether needed or not, can you allow a project of this scale to happen, not only here, but anywhere? This is almost like a Stewie Do cartoon. If it wasn't for those meddling kids, I would have gotten away with it. FirstEnergy is so used to building these lines with no opposition or questions, that they got cocky and tried to jam this right through our towns. They had a good thing going, but must have thought we were hibernating or completely stupid if they thought we would let them get away with this. To all the elective officials that will hear this speech, to the BPU and rate council, I ask you, how can you protect the citizens you are sworn to protect from this abuse of power? How do we know that any of the projects under the multi-billion-dollar initiative were actually warranted? Just because you put reliability in need does not make it so. I ask Congressman Frank Cologne, or any other official with authority, to form a task force to investigate the legitimacy of all transmission projects started by FirstEnergy from 2014 I actually have a good idea of who should join that task force, so I think we'll have some volunteers from here. I firmly believe laws needed to stop this bad behavior, and that has clearly gone on for far too long. The first three pages of the 2015 FirstEnergy annual statement are included with this Besides being a husband and a father, I'm also the treasurer of RAGE. I'm responsible for managing every penny that comes in and out, and therefore, I work for all of you. I have met with many of you... I have met with many of you in your very own neighborhoods. I have had an incredible journey the past nine months, meeting the wonderful people of these five towns. I've seen generosity, I've seen people come together, and I've seen the dismay on their faces when they learn the specifics of this project. The most common questions are, "How can they, JCPN-L, do this? Can they just take my property? Why would New Jersey Transit allow this? It makes no sense. Would a judge come to my house to see how close we are and the impact it would have on our community?" I can never tell them the exact answer to any of these questions, but I do tell them, as long as we stick together, as long as we never give up, and we do our part, we could win this battle. People have used the comparison of David versus Goliath. However, I think that comparison is way too generous for us. But yet, JCPN-L has acted more like a rat than a giant. If you think about how JCPN-L tried to rush this project through, how they asked the BPU for expedited treatment, and were not only denied, but sent down to the OAL, the reason we are here today. They were hoping to get this done without too much opposition. They were hoping, if they could be really vague about this project, people would not get scared and remain on the sidelines until it was too late. I can tell you, they did not count on the towns intervening, and they certainly did not count on the strength of the five towns which make up RAGE. You will hear a lot... You will hear a lot today, but I can tell you what you will not hear, is JCPN-L explaining in a rational way why they need this project, why they didn't pick or even explore different routes, why they refuse to update their existing outdated infrastructure, or why they continually try to mislead the public. I can tell you, they did not count on RAGE or painting through an Oprah request from New Jersey Transit, all the maps with their saccations of the poles. The fakeness they were counting on is no longer there. It is very real and specific, and even scarier than most imagined. Now, I'm going to tell you about another speaker from the first public hearing. To me, one of the most powerful statements came from a little girl. She walked up to the microphone and introduced herself and her little sister. She spoke about her little sister's winning battle of cancer. She described the routine of treatments and hospital stays, how the little girl of five has gone through more than most adults in the room. She begged the judge to hear her voice and not subject other children to a project such as this, one that would cause other children to face the same hardship. I want that little girl to know that although she was speaking to the judge, I heard her. I want her to know that I will do everything in my power to stop this project, and so At this time, I would like to donate $500 to RAGE to use to fight, in the fight against JCPN-L. If and when... If and when this fight is over, and there is money left over, I would like the remaining money to be put towards another lawsuit seeking punitive damages against JCPN-L for There's more. I also ask the OAL and the BPU not only to reject this project, but I truly believe there should be substantial punitive damage levied against FirstEnergy and JCPN-L. My reasons are simple: they have failed to truly examine the need for the project and alternative ways to address it. They have failed to examine better alternative routes. They have continuously misled the public, the government, the BPU, and OAL. This includes the impact to the residential home values. They have claimed the population has grown when it has not. They have claimed the forecast of future energy demand is greater due to population and more energy using applications, when in fact, it is down. They have painted a picture that this line will make our towns and surrounding towns of Tristie more reliable, when in fact, it will not. They have failed to mention that their aging and outdated infrastructure is at the heart of the problem we face, and would rather invest in false and misleading advertising than fix the real problems. If this wasn't enough, they have wasted countless hours of many residents to fight this. They have also forced residents in towns to use their hard-earned money to investigate the need and claims asserted by JCPN-L, as well as hire our own legal counsel and experts. This is their third time putting us through this hell. Even to a simple person like myself, this behavior seems to demonstrate irresponsibility on a level worthy of punishment. I would also like to donate another $500 to the Infinite Love of Kids Foundation, which the parents of this girl started to benefit other children with cancer. Thank you for your strength. It has helped me find mine. To JCPN-L. My pockets may be empty now, but my resolve is stronger than ever. I read every new sentence with the chatty rage. I apologize to those I usually don't send notes back. And believe me, there are many like me out there, and the road ahead for you and this project, it will not be short. It will not be easy, and I promise you, it will not go unpunished. Before I go, to those in the audience that are thinking of speaking, or perhaps at a time get discouraged, remember this quote, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Margaret Mead. Thank you.
Keith Jefferson, and then Leo Decker, and...
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Mark Bryan Hunt, and I oppose the Monmouth County Reliability Project. I've not been paid to be here, and my house is 500...
Quiet, John, please. All right. I'm gonna need to articulate and slow down a little bit, but I just want to speak.
You got it. My name is Mark Bryan Hunt, and I oppose the Monmouth County Reliability Project. I've not been paid to be here, and my house is 503 feet from the right-of-way. To go back to the beginning, my wife and I were married very young, at 18 and 19. We started out making $8,000 a year as a soldier at Fort Monmouth, and after eight years of saving, with the help of my in-laws, we were able to buy our first home. After another seven years, we were able to move into our present home at 20 Woodside Drive in Middletown, in order to send our daughters to the outstanding Middletown school system. We paid $420,000 in order to do so, and took every penny of equity and every penny of savings we had. We love living here. We enjoy our neighbors, the community, the parks, the ease of getting to Red Bank, and the proximity to commute, whether it's New York or whether it's New Jersey. With that said, had I known then that these power lines were a possibility, we would never have bought our home. And we gave our Realtor list of requirements at the top, was that it not be near power lines. Having two young children at the time, the safety was too important. Fast forward to last year, and the houses that are not planned along the power lines have continued to increase while those along it have not. My wife Suzanne and I enjoyed going to open houses to get decorating ideas, and we've seen the increase in areas other than ours, and seen that ours has not. To be sure, I had a Realtor come out and appraise my home, so that we can move away from the power lines when it first came out. Unfortunately, my $420,000 home is no longer worth $420,000, it's now worth $408,000. 28 years of saving, paying a mortgage, and we've gone backwards, and that is just with the chance that the power lines go in. What will happen to the value of my home if they do? JCPN-L says this will have no effect on the value of our homes. But using common sense, Your Honor, if you have two homes, one has massive power lines behind us, and one doesn't, which one would you choose to live in?
Hi, good evening. This is Molly Kenny, and I'm Justice Kenny, and I live in Middletown. I live more than a mile from the proposed line, and I'm 100% opposed to this project for all of the reasons that have been stated already. I have not been paid to speak here tonight. I work in software, and I commute daily to Manhattan. I'm scared to death of these high-voltage power lines and electricity in general. When I was just one years old, while my parents were ignoring me, I bit a lamp wire. I was electrocuted and nearly died. Forty years later, I'm lucky to be standing here, and I shouldn't have been forced, and I won't be forced, to stand beneath the high-voltage transmission wires while I wait for my train to arrive, to go to work, and be exposed to EMFs during my commute. We have enough problems with New Jersey Transit and safety, to add these poles to the already crowded corridor is the very last thing we need. It sickens me to see FirstEnergy and JCPN-L spend all this money to try to jam this project through. The elaborate television commercials, the union workers that are paid to be here tonight, and the people that were hired to go door-to-door in areas that aren't even connected to the Red Bank substation, or listed in the BPU filing, that misrepresented this project and the truth behind this initiative. Just this morning, I went to the dentist, who happens to live in Madison Square, New Jersey. Dr. Chris Rooney told me two gentlemen from JCPN-L were at his home over the past weekend, knocked on the door, and asked for his support. According to JCPN-L, this project is all about service reliability. If it's really about reliability, then why don't those advertisements clearly articulate the improvement? If it's really about reliability, then why doesn't the BPU filing contain measurements which clearly describe the need and include data points to define the incremental improvements that this project will bring? I read most of the 671 pages and didn't see anything that quantifies the need nor the expected improvement... nor the expected improvement in the availability of service. Since JCPN L failed to provide these statistics, I took it upon myself to solve for it. In the past 10 years, there have been two outages. According to the BPU filing, only one of the two outages would have undoubtedly been mitigated by having a third transmission line in place. There are 8,760 hours in a year, times 10 years, which equals 87,600 hours. Giving JCPN L the benefit of the doubt, I subtracted 16 hours for both outages, not just the one, which equals 87,584. Then I divide that by 87,600, which comes out to .9998. So that's the key number, right? The key number is .998. I multiply that by 100. The result is 99.98 system availability and uptime. The opportunity for the improvement is a meager 2/100 of a percentage point. To put it into perspective, 99.98 is 3/100 better than Google's published reliability targets. So the two transmission lines into the Red Bank Substation are currently more reliable than Google's services. So, First Energy's earnings per share last year was negative $14.49. First Energy also has a PE ratio of negative $2.18 and lost more than $6 billion last year. Yet, they're going to invest $120 million in this project for an incremental improvement of 2.2 percentage point, of less than 2/100 of a percentage point. So unfortunately, there is no such thing as 100% fault tolerance, and there's no such thing as 100% availability. Not for Google, and definitely not for a company which lost $6 billion last year. The fact is that First Energy and JCPN L aren't making money from distribution, rather, it's an attempt to take money out of our pockets and prop up their falling profits and failing business. JCPN L can lie all they want about the... But the data is the data. It isn't adding up. And I ask that you make a prudent decision to help terminate this project immediately.